Special joint meeting with the planning commission on February the 11th, 2014. The roll call, Mr. President?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Proton Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Horrich?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington? Councilmember Keith? Chair Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Gotti?
Here.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Krenz?
Here.
Mr. Sanzico? Mr. Shewski?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Strachan?
Here.
Mr. Tangle?
Here.
And the record should reflect that Councilman Pennington is here. Not to speak for you, Ed, but...
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. As indicated in the agenda, we have a full plate tonight, so I don't want to spend too much time with an introduction. I would just like to say thank you to John Tagle for being the chairman in the past, and welcome to Don Edmonds as the current chair. Welcome, Don. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. I just, another special thanks to the city administration, the planning commission, Mr. Carlisle, and all of those, the city attorney, the city attorney office, and staff for putting together the text amendment for the assisted living. It was a credit to everyone to get that done so quickly and so efficiently, and as you probably noticed, that was okay last evening at our city council meeting, it was moving forward, and I think it was a good thing. Thanks to everyone for that. So I would defer to Mr. Edmonds if he wishes to say anything before we start this evening.
I have very few remarks, other than at the end of the meeting, I'd like to at least raise a couple of items that the planning commission would like to have considered for some of these future joint meetings. Other than that, I'm, thank you.
I think there is a plan at the end of the presentation that there will be some discussion led by City Manager Kishnik about future meetings and what we need to do moving City Manager Kishnik, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you at this point. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Planning Commission Chair, and both members of both bodies. This is a real compressed timeframe that we have to talk about as many issues as we can, and what we talked about at the last, the first meeting where these two bodies met, we said that we would come here, which is two months later, and we would have a discussion on two basic topics, one more general, one more specific, and that was the master plan as number one, and number two, building heights on Rochester Road. Staff, when we met and we began to contemplate all that is involved, and that we thought, you know, the building heights on Rochester Road certainly are encompassed in some target areas that are brought out in the master plan update process. So while you have a very lengthy agenda, C1 through C6, what we thought we would do is simply talk about the master plan, an overview, the master plan update, and then do an exercise to allow everyone around the table to identify issues, and then categorize those issues to see where we would go from here. So that's where we can have a good discussion to bring up the issues through an exercise process Mr. Carlisle will take us through that we think will work, identify some issues, categorize them, and allow us to move forward two months from now. So that's the exercise summary. And with that, I'll have, I'll lead that to make sure we've summarized everything, and we didn't miss anything, so everyone has a chance within the 60 minutes to give us direction. And then when we come back in two months, I believe it's April 24th?
Twenty-second, I believe.
Two, five, close to it. April 22nd, thank you. There will have been public input meetings, and so we can give you an update on that, as well as drill down into some of these issues that are identified tonight. So with that, we want to quickly go through the master plan overview and update, and then get to the exercise so we can get the issues on the table. And Mr. Carlisle, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Sabanat's going to take us through the master plan overview before Mr. Carlisle.
Thanks, Brian. So I'm going to give a brief overview on planning and the 2008 master plan that we're going to be updating. Thought this is a good idea to really treat this as a very, very succinct primer for members of not only the planning commission, the city council, but those in the audience and those at home. What is planning? Why do we plan? Why is it important? And I'll try to summarize that in mere minutes. What a plan does, the master plan does, is it really, it provides a roadmap for the best path from a known present into an unknown future. Basically, what it does is it helps to create a vision as a community moves forward. It's also required by state law. The Michigan Municipal Planning Act actually requires that communities adopt the master plan, and they also require that they look, revisit the master plan at least every five years to determine if it's still relevant. Our planning commission has done that. They've made a determination it is relevant, needs to be tweaked in a couple areas, and that's what we're kind of kick-starting by having these meetings, putting this meeting this evening. It also gives us an opportunity to address those issues, those tweaks we need to make in a logical, in a logical fashion through the master plan process. In terms of function, every master plan contains a general statement of the city's goals and policies. It is a policy document, okay? It helps to clearly define a direction for the city as it moves forward. Master plans help to coordinate public improvements and private development, and this is a master plan under another state law, under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. That act actually requires that the zoning ordinance be based on a master plan, and it further requires that any amendments to the zoning ordinance, including rezonings, which is amendment to the map, be based on the master plan. So that's a reason why when we get reports, we have a section in the report, the rezoning reports, as to whether it complies, the application complies with the master plan. In terms of the history of planning in Troy, the original master plan was adopted in 1965, okay? And from 1965 until 2008, it was updated above 20 times, and it was really never comprehensively updated until 2008. There wasn't, there was a revision in the 1970s that kind of simmered it down and streamlined it, but in terms of an overall shift or comprehensive modification of policy in the master plan, there wasn't one in 1965 until 2008. The underlying goals of the plan that was originally adopted in 65 was to control growth and separate land uses, and I would argue that it did a great job. Troy was developed exactly as it was planned. It was, it's pretty incredible, really, if you think about it. So 2008, prior to 2008, there was a Vision 2020. It was a, it was a citywide visioning process that I'm sure all of you remember. That helped to provide direction in terms of where we wanted to take this master plan. This was, again, this is a big step because it had been over 40 years since we've updated the master plan. And what came out of Vision 2020 was that this document needed to be more than just involving land use, needed to go a little bit deeper, including really emphasizing policy, okay? And the really important policy question that we wanted to consider in this master plan was striking a balance between economic development, growth, and protection of single-family residential neighborhoods. I think that's, that comes out in the master plan. In terms of an approach, the 2008 plan incorporates a lot of innovative land use and zoning concepts, including form-based codes, performance zoning, the use of incentives, the use of incentives to encourage developers to preserve natural features. In some instances, that's been successful, in some not so successful, but it's, it really wasn't, there wasn't an attempt to incentivize to really encourage developers to do creative things. It contemplated sustainable development and creative ways to transition between incompatible land uses, and in the 2008 master plan process, a lot of you will remember, we really stressed public participation. There's a lot of workshops and a lot of forums where people were given an opportunity to participate. So really, before I introduce Dick, so the planning commission's made a determination the plan's still relevant, we've got to make some tweaks, and now we're, we've involved Carlisle Werber Associates, Dick and Ben Carlisle, to help us in this update process, and now Dick's going to summarize that process.
And the process we're going through is a pretty normal thing, we find, that even though we'd like to think we write perfect plans and rewrite perfect ordinances, we know that just doesn't, that case just doesn't exist, and that's why you have updates. And the planning commission, in reviewing the 2008 plan, has indicated that there are several areas that we want to focus on, I'll speak about those in a moment, some particular target areas. We know that the demographics are changing here, as well as everywhere, and we have to address that particular issue, and as we know, with some recent issues, we have some transition. I call them edge areas, you know, the areas at the edge where we have issues that arise that we certainly need to address and fine-tune our approach on things. So from the standpoint of the target areas which we mentioned at the last meeting, and you have some more specific takeaway with you there as in terms of some market and demographic information for each of these areas. We have the Maple Road and the Ivy zoning area, which is in the extreme southern part. Obviously, we have Big Beaver Road, which we want to assess and evaluate how we're doing there. We have the North Troy area, which we've paid some attention to, but probably not enough, and there's some untapped resources there. And then we have the Rochester Road area, which we have a whole different set of issues there that need to be addressed. Mark, you want to speak a little bit more about the Ivy, Big Beaver Road area?
Yeah, thank you, Dick. If you look at number one district, it's Maple Road in the south end, I was arguing, not arguing, we were talking with Ben and Dick, that we needed to make sure that we include all of this older industrial area. In the end, we did not include them in the district, but what I thought we could do is that we would learn lessons, and then we would then say we could transfer those lessons and techniques to those industrial areas which are outside of the zone, and that would be more particularly down in this area here, and I'll turn to you a little bit.
We mentioned the last meeting that we intend on having some public participation, which will include this more specific participation with residents and business owners on Rochester Road. However, we also plan to hold in the citywide real estate forum, which will focus on some of the economic development areas that we just mentioned, Big Beaver, North Troy, Maple Road areas. And then at the outcome, what we hope, come out of this will be recommendations regarding land use, transportation, zoning recommendations, and market conditions. Are there things that we need to do to even further fine-tune our approach in response to changing market conditions? We also know, as I said, that we are in the midst of a sea change, of demographic change in this country, and obviously, this area is part of that also. There will be equal amount of seniors over 65 years of age, as there will be youth under 18. This will have significant implications for city managers and other managers in communities and council members in terms of the needs and desires of the aging population, and really how you maintain Troy as a viable, sustainable city. And the ability, this city, as well as many others, to provide the necessary services is contingent upon maintaining a sustainable tax base from that standpoint. And the fact of the matter is, as the population ages and has more disposable resources and income, this is the kind of population that we hope that we're going to make Troy a friendly place to maintain that kind of population also, just as well as attracting a younger population. We also know that there's been some recent conflicts in some of the what we call edge areas between single-family residential and non-residential development. If you go, if you look at the master plan that currently exists, it is a priority in that master plan is to protect single-family residential areas. Obviously, in the implementation, we learned some things, and these are some areas we have to address, such as the issues that the mayor spoke about, the manager spoke about with Rochester Road and some of the height issues. I know that there's been other futures. So then, this is a normal part of the fine-tuning, and as we go into the exercise tonight, I'm sure we're going to hear more of your concerns about some of these kinds of issues. And we have the issues of height and setbacks in areas where we need to perhaps fortify the buffers and transitions between potential, potentially conflicting land uses. And where we know we have some of these areas are Rochester Road, up around the neighborhood nodes, and what you see are the circles in blue here, north side of Big Beaver, and the Stevenson Maple Road area. So these will be areas that will need to be addressed, but again, we'd like to hear more of your thoughts about some of these areas, as well as anything else tonight, if that matters. So we are actually starting the zoning amendment process, but you already received the assisted living, some of the language in that regard. The Rochester Road and the Ivy zoning is going to be a subject of, sort of, you know, it's not going to necessarily wait for the master plan to be complete to start to address some of these issues, is what I'm trying to say. And we know that we need further study in such areas as neighborhood nodes, Big Beaver Road, Stevenson Maple, where we know we have these areas on the edge, where we, these are the areas that are always places where there are right to potential conflict. The schedule, we're running this all the way through June. In likelihood, it may go a little bit beyond that, but we hope by our next meeting, we're going to have some of the results of our forums and workshops that we spoke about. But this tonight really is the first opportunity for us to have a discussion with you about some of the issues that are of concern to you, and we have an exercise tonight that we'd like to have you participate in, where we actually will have a discussion with the whole group here about some of the issues of a concern. So Ben, I'd like you to pass, I'll raise it, pass these out. This is an exercise that we've used frequently in these types of settings, and it's, I don't like, I don't like the way it's labeled, but it's called brain writing, but that's really what it is. It's a, it's a combination of brainstorming and, and putting your ideas on paper. So what you're going to have, you have three sticky notes in front of you, and what I would like each of you to do is to spend the next five to 10 minutes, and I'll wrap it up, that part, when I see that everybody's finished. But what I'd like you to do is write down one thought on each piece of paper in terms of an issue or an area of concern to you, or something that you would like us, the planning commission, city council, or anybody, city staff, to focus on in terms of issues that are of concern to you. What we'll do is, once you write your thoughts on these, we collect them, we array them, and then we'll discuss this with the entire group. But this gives everybody an opportunity to get their thoughts out on paper, what their concerns are, and have a real healthy discussion, so please have at it. And when you're done with one, just hold your hand in the air, and Ben and Brent will connect those, collect those.
I have markers, too, if you want to make your notes a little more...
Dick, you're going to put those in categories, right?
Yeah, well, categories add.
Want me to shut that off?
Yeah. We're going to use this board.
No peeking.
Grammar will not, grammar, grammar will not be graded, however, penmanship may be, okay?
A black is good.
You didn't want to coordinate your shirt.
Yeah, I know. I'm going neutral black.
And you know what? It's any idea that you have, it doesn't, you know, don't be concerned about it, I'll be eloquently stated, it'll all be part of the discussion. And by the way, Mr. Edmonds, this may actually help identify some of the issues that the commission would like to see for future discussion, for future working sessions like this.
We'll start. You don't have to finish all three, we can start collecting them now, as you, as you...
Finish one, raise fully your hand.
Yeah, we'll pick it up, take it.
Thank you. No. Ben, it's really hard.
Here, you can categorize these.
Here you go. So you got one request, another to give away. No, there's no writer on it. Oh, thanks. There you go. I got spell checked. Yeah, write it on this pen. Is this ready?
If anybody has, has a burning fourth thought that you feel, you have to, you know, you can't, you have to get out there, we'll be happy to let you provide that also. We won't, we won't, you know, you're not putting your initials on these or anything, so we won't hold anybody responsible.
Write your resumes. Okay. Tom?
If anybody has, has a burning fourth thought that you feel, you have to, you know, you can't, you have to get out there, we'll be happy to let you provide that also. We won't, we won't, you know, you're not putting your initials on these or anything, so we won't hold anybody responsible.
Write your resumes. Okay. How'd that black marker you went, that score shows up pretty well.
Yeah, I'm the only one. No guess, nobody's going to chant.
Your initials are on that.
They can interpret.
I get a bird.
Well, surprisingly, when you group them, you'll see how similar many of your thinking actually are, and that's why we do it this way.
Tell me your shirt.
Yeah, how come there's purple paper with...
Mine's not neat, because mine didn't have lines on it. My first two are pretty solid.
All right. Well, we got, anybody done here? Okay, I can tell right now, I'm probably going to take my coat off here in this. So, all right, listen, as you can see, as I indicated to you, Brian, that this group would not be lost for thoughts on this particular exercise. So let me just summarize these real briefly in terms of the categories that I see up here, and then I'd like to generate a little bit of discussion about these, because what I see is general concerns, but maybe we can hone down on some of the specifics. Okay, the first grouping over here is related to building heights, as, and it appears as they relate, height issues, and I think, as I'm getting through all this, height issues as they relate to neighboring residential areas. That seems to be the recurring theme. As a matter of fact, we have about close to 10 or 11 comments in that particular regard. Also, part of that is communications with residential neighbors to address concerns. I'd like to have a little discussion about that. Interaction between residential and major road commercial frontages, again, some of the same kind of similar issues, but if there's something more than just building height, I'd like to hear about that. More protection for the residential areas and the approval of the special approval zoning process. So those all seem to be pretty related to issues of height, particularly as they relate to residential areas. And when we get into the discussion part, correct me if I'm wrong. The second area here that seems to be a grouping here is a need for new, for some, for some addressing of certain issues in our sign ordinances, such as technology, LED, I see that in a couple of places, and then I just see sign ordinances in a couple more, and maybe we can have a little bit of discussion about that. This grouping is kind of interesting, because it talks about new, new housing stock, and one is address additional multiple-family residence, et cetera, attract new housing, a new housing stock to attract young persons and empty nesters, not the typical two-story colonial, okay? Meeting the challenge of design preferences generationally, the blend between urban, contemporary, and traditional, and some of this is a little bit related to maybe some of the issues you've been dealing with here lately in that particular regard. Design standards that will draw the next generation. Again, these are some of the generational issues, and it looks like a bit, a mix between young and old. The need to focus on landscaping on Big Beaver, and then we've got a Lankir, so I don't know what that thought is. Trees and landscape laws, you know, increase incentives for cluster options, saving trees, 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 okay, so apparently, tree preservation has been an issue of recent concern, or maybe ongoing concern. And then we have a mix of a variety of other issues here that are a little, a little less easy to categorize, and I'll go through these real briefly, and then we'll start back here. Flexibility in zoning on the Maple Road corridor, plan for future, yes, yet unknown land use, petition MDOT for I-75 exit and entrance at Maple Road. Flexibility to accommodate redevelopment along Maple Road corner, so that's related to Maple Road.
A lot of categories.
Well, surprisingly, when you group them, you'll see how similar many of your thinking actually are, and that's why we do it this way.
Yeah, how come there's purple paper?
Mine's not neat, because mine didn't have lines on it.
Well, we got, anybody done here? Okay, I can tell right now, I'm probably gonna take my coat off here in a minute. So, all right, listen, as you can see, as I indicated to you, Brian, that this group would not be lost for thoughts on this particular exercise. So let me just summarize these real briefly, in terms of the categories that I see up here, and then I'd like to generate a little bit of discussion about it always, because what I see is general concerns, but maybe we can hone down on some of the specifics. Okay, the first grouping over here is related to building heights, as, and it appears as they relate height issues, and I think, as I'm getting through all this, height issues as they relate to neighboring residential areas, that seems to be the recurring theme. As a matter of fact, we have about close to ten or eleven comments in that particular regard. Also, part of that is communications with residential neighbors to address concerns, I'd like to have a little discussion about that. Interaction between residential and major road commercial frontages, again, some of the same kind of similar issues, but if there's something more than just building height, I'd like to hear about that. More protection for the residential areas and the approval of the special approval zoning process. So those all seem to be pretty related to issues of height, particularly as they relate to residential areas, and when we get into the discussion part, correct me if I'm wrong. The second area here that seems to be a grouping here is a need for new, for some, for some addressing of certain issues in our sign ordinances, such as technology, LED, I see that in a couple of places, and then I just see sign ordinances in a couple more, and maybe we can have a little bit of discussion about that. This grouping is kind of interesting, because it talks about new, new housing stock, one is address additional multiple-family residents, et cetera, attract new housing, a new housing stock to attract young persons and empty nesters, not the typical two-story colonial, okay? Meeting the challenge of design preferences generationally, the blend between urban contemporary and traditional, and some of this is a little bit related to maybe some of the issues you've been dealing with here lately, in that particular regard. Design standards that will draw the next generation, again, these are some of the generational issues, and it looks like a bit, a mix between young and old. The need to focus on landscaping on Big Beaver, and then we've got a Lankir, so I don't know what that thought is. Trees and landscape laws, you know, an increase in incentives for cluster options, saving trees, 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 okay, so apparently tree preservation has been an issue of recent concern, or maybe ongoing concern. And then we have a mix of, of a variety of other issues here that are a little, a little less easy to categorize, and I'll go through these real briefly, and then we'll start back here. Flexibility in zoning on the Maple Road corridor, plan for future, yes, yet unknown land use, petition MDOT for I-75 exit and entrance at Maple Road, flexibility to accommodate redevelopment along Maple Road corridor, so that's related to Maple Road, a process to be adopted to include building and engineering departments, and economic development information, and planning permits and appeals, storm work, a couple copies of comments about stormwater management, and then the comment about walkable areas, city hall, campus, parks, shopping centers. So, these are a much more diverse set of comments. So let's go back to the very first one. What specifically is it that some of the issues related to the height and the neighborhood transitional areas have been of concern to you, and what specific areas would you, do you think that we ought to be concentrating on, as we look at the master plan and some of our zoning ordinance changes? So I know a number of you had a comment about that, so it doesn't necessarily have to be someone who wrote that comment, but what are some of your, what are some of your thoughts about that? Wait.
On Rochester Road, we all know the, the multi-story storage facility, five stories, I believe, backing right up to residential area with very little setback, that's a concern. It was an oversight, I think, for me, when I didn't think that would be allowed, and talked to Mark Miller and learned, yep, absolutely will be. I think that's a little, little much, a little too much height for that residential area.
Other thoughts in that regard? Mr. Schultz.
We're talking about housing styles that are going to attract new people to the city, and two-story houses aren't gonna, or two-story buildings aren't gonna do it. If you look around, the vibrant communities aren't building two-story structures, they're building two and three, or three and four-story structures for residential.
Is there a relationship, though, between location and the issues that are, you're expressing about the effect on neighborhood residences? And Mayor, you're shaking your head.
Well, I think absolutely, every little knoll that we're gonna, not, that we're gonna be dealing with here in the future, is probably gonna be backing up to some residential area in town. That's just about all that's left now, and the last three that, that we've had come before us have all dealt with height backing up to residential areas, so I think that's the trend, I think that's why it's important for us, at least for me, that a lot of these things come to us as conditional. I know we can't force that, but it's good to, to know the height that's coming in, it's good to know what the parameters are, at least for me. When you start putting five, six-story buildings right next to residential, you're gonna get obviously negative feedback for that, so I, I think in the future, that's where we're going, everything's gonna be close to residential, and you do need to be cognizant of the height when you're dealing with that areas.
Are there other thoughts in that particular regard? John, I'm gonna put you and Tom maybe briefly on the spot, are there constraints that you see as designers and architects regarding the height issues, are we, do we have workable standards now, and would reduction in height levels in certain areas create design issues for some of the things that we're trying to achieve here?
Well, I think to answer your last question, yes, and I think there are ways that we can, and you see this in other, in cities, where there's a relationship between distance and height, you know, as, as buildings get, step back from a right-of-way, they can get higher, so I think if we start, and I don't believe there's anything in our ordinance that, that actually lays out that kind of a relationship, so I think if we start looking at that, there are a lot of standards, a lot of things we can look at to build off of and, and use that, then to come up with a solid reason, it said if it's so many feet away from a single-family residence district, that it can be so many stories high.
So it's a function of distance setback, and the further away, the greater height could be tolerated, do you agree with that?
I concur with the comments that were made, however, I think the main thing that we have is that we're ninety percent or ninety-nine percent built up, the sites that we have, we all have problem sites, and flexibility, I think, is one of our big concerns now. The key thing is whether or not it is best for the city, in all cases, what I try to do is make any judgments, I try to judge it based on what I think would be best for the city as well as the neighborhood, but I'm also concerned about what is the best for the city. So, I know that's deviating from your subject, but yes, the height limitations is a concern, and certainly setback is a ratio of the distance as well.
And, and some of the zoning areas, we've had discussions, we've had petitioners come in and present their cases, and, and we've been told that we have to vote for this, otherwise the city can be sued, because they're meeting our parameters. Well, to me, on some of these cases, it means something's wrong with our parameters on the zoning, and they have to be more flexible, because, you know, we have, sure, the city's important, but to me, as, as a commissioner, the single-family residential neighborhoods are of utmost importance, that's where everybody's biggest investment is, that's where they've chose to raise their children, and, and I think that we have to, we have to have more flexibility on saying no, even if the setbacks and some of these other things are met, there has to be some kind of a clause in this approval process, where if something has an adverse impact on adjacent areas, that it can be addressed, and not just, has to be an automatic yes.
Other thoughts? I know some of you have them.
Well, I'll jump in too. I think the, the height, as John brought up, the height and the setback from neighboring residents is critical, and I, I think perhaps we can provide some type of a matrix to address those kind of issues. I think the two hotels, Stevenson, I think did everything possible to meet, to meet that, and, you know, and stepping back from the residents and the screening, I think those are the kind of things that, that we really need from developers.
Right. That's probably an example, that had we had a requirement in place for greater setbacks for the additional height, they probably would have met that, from the amount of setback they had there, but I think that's, hearing that seems to be part of the desire here, is to really address that, as well as perhaps having stronger standards in the ordinance to give some discretion, to ensure there's compatibility, because I think the mayor's correctly pointed out, there are probably not too many really easy sites left in the city to develop, and they're all gonna be challenging, and they're all gonna be on a case-by-case basis from a lot of standpoint, and they're all gonna be challenges to both the developer, challenges to the commission and the council, and, and challenges to the people that are living around there, so consequently, the ability to ensure that that fits in there is, is probably an area that would serve everybody much better from this standpoint. Any other thoughts about this issue? Any other things that you've observed, or any specific areas geographically besides the Big B corridor, perhaps Stevenson, some of these, Rochester Road, that we should be looking at? Okay. This is somewhat related to this, but I'm not sure if it is, and this is the issue of communication with residential neighbors to address their concerns, and I'm not, I'm not entirely sure if that's solely related to this, or it's, it was really an outgrowth of this particular issue that came up, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
We typically get a lot of feedback from residents when we have a big topic like that, you know, to show.
Amazing what improving economy is doing, isn't it?
Right. And a lot of times, they have questions, concerns, you know, why is this going here? You know, and I'm a realtor, so I, you know, I know when, when I sell a house to somebody, and it backs up to commercial, or an open field, or whatever that is, the, you know, they typically don't pay as much for those parcels, they, they don't know what's coming their way ten years from now, five years from now, and, you know, it's, I think it's important for us to be able to appropriately relay that information to them when we come up against those types of things. Case in point, the Amber Apartments, you know, there's commercial between the apartments, they knew that that was commercial when they bought, so, you know, again, we just have to be better equipped to try to address those, and make them feel a little more easy.
That's a, it's a, it's a excellent point and suggestion, how can we do this? I mean, what, what are, what are some of the specific suggestions that we may incorporate? Do we, I, I know that we encourage developers to have neighborhood meetings prior to, you know, submission, are there other things that we can be doing? Because again, there are not gonna be easy sites as we move forward.
I don't know if the city council, the planning commissioner are aware, but Brent has worked with IT to develop a portal, which you can go online and find out everything about development, proposed developments, right Brent?
Yes. Every application, they're extended up for planning commission.
Including the plans and everything, we, we're not sure how many people utilize that, but you can find out about any development proposal in the city.
So that's one of these, and then we have to obviously allow citizens to be aware of the fact that that service is available on the city's website, correct?
Dick, I have a question for you, you work with a lot of communities, do you see in, in their ordinance, is there any requirements at developers where there may be backing up to residential properties, that it's a requirement that they meet with the, you know, that they make the, the effort to meet with them?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think that's a vehicle, we had a project, actually, I think it was Church on De Quinder, and it was a stalemate for two meetings, and finally, they got together, and the third meeting, they came back, and they were all, both sides, both sides were satisfied, so, a, as opposed to the city, you know, cutting the baby in two, it's like, look, you guys talk about this, if you can't decide, that's one thing, but at least make the attempt.
You know, I, I, again, my experience is, I usually find that, that the time to inform somebody of a new project, when they get the public notice in the mail, is probably too late. And that's when all of a sudden, the, you know, the red flags go up, because it's, it's always misinterpreted, so, I mean, I, one, as I know that, I mean, I always recommend, wherever I am, that there be some communication, but two, there is certainly some, you know, there's, there's stronger recommendation that we can make that be done. Did you have something, Mark, did you have your hand? Okay. That we can see that happens, because most often, it's a matter of just miscommunication and misunderstanding, and most developers who want to get a project moving forward will do what they can to try to accommodate some of the neighbors' concerns. But those things generally fought out in the public arena are not, not, is not the best form for, for, you know, accommodation in that particular regard. Are there any other thoughts about that, that we need to take into consideration? I think you probably saw this recently, and that's probably what raises your concern.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think certainly the portal is a great idea to provide access, but one of the things that I've seen in Troy, and I don't know if we can expand on it, is when something's going to happen, they put a sign, it's like a green sign on a tent, and I haven't seen that in other communities, and I think it's a really good tool, in fact, if there's even to make it bigger, or require it when there's unintended use coming before either planning or council, because that, that's really been helpful.
We utilize, we utilize those signs now for special use applications at rezonations.
And we note that some other communities, what they do is they, we use a sign from Public Works, and they place it, other communities will have a standard, and a larger sign, like a four by eight, which then, their standard language, and then they're responsible for that, and it's usually much larger than.
But that, you know, 'cause that just affects the people that are gonna be driving by, and it gives them early warning, 'cause I know the most recent example of Livernoy and Town Center, you know, the people that were there, some of the residents expressed a lack of knowledge, and, you know, they were late to the game, and had we had prior knowledge, we might have been able to address some of those concerns.
You know, we, we, I think we have this being on the sort of practitioner meeting in some cases, maybe even the planning commissioner side, we sort of have this expectation that people know, or should know, what's going on in their community, but by the same token, I mean, I look at myself sometimes, and I don't always know what's going on in my own backyard in Ann Arbor either, so the, the, the idea that we, enhanced effort to improve communications is only going to make this better, and make projects better along the road. Mr. Mayor.
I think it's important that there's a standardization when it comes to that communication, so that every, everybody's treated the same, and we don't say, well, we're gonna do it this time, and then we're gonna do it this time. I think it has to be standardized, and I think, rather than reinvent the wheel, if there are some, some cities that are doing some things that you're aware of, I would encourage, if you could bring those forward to us and work in conjunction, maybe with the legal department, and see, see if there's some way of standardizing this communication, so it's done with everybody.
I, I'm going to, we've got fifteen minutes, I'm gonna switch over, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leapfrog a little bit here, and then come back to some things here, because I wanted to try to go to a couple areas where I know that there was a lot of comments made here, and some concerns, I think, that have been expressed by the commission in, with some recent projects, and that is the area of, of trees, landscaping, tree preservation, encouraging clustering of housing, again, because many of the sites that we're seeing now are infill sites, and are, remain wooded in some cases, so I'd like to have some discussion about that. What are the concerns, what would you like to see happen, what would be, what are some of the other opinions about this? Let's, let's have a discussion about this. Mr. Schub.
Well, I, I'm a strong proponent of saving trees, however, I know that the previous tree and wetlands ordinance that was proposed was a disaster in terms, you know, the public was, was not ready for that, and I, I agree with them, because I don't, it was far too expansive, telling someone how, where they could plant a tree in their yard, and how far away from the right-of-way, so I would like to restrict any kind of a, a tree ordinance, or restrict it to something that affects new developments only, and that maybe either requires, or greatly incentivizes the, the cluster option. At some point, you know, if somebody, a developer is, is told that, you know, it's like a no-brainer, you, why, why won't you lay this out in a, in a, in a cluster option? You know, 'cause you could have the bonus of so many more units, which is big, big bucks for them, so that's kind of my, my thoughts.
There are communities that have replacement ratios, where if you cut down a tree that is of a specific caliber, caliper, you have to replant X number of trees of a smaller size, so that ultimately, the trees get replaced. I fully understand that if there's a forty-inch oak tree in the middle of what is going to be a building footprint, the developer is not going to leave it there, they're going to build a house. However, the analogy I used at the last planning commission meeting is that there's a development on Waddles between Livernoy and Rochester called Hidden Forest, and the forest is certainly hidden, because it was clear-cut before the first house was built. There's not a tree, except those required in the, along the street, the little lollipop trees, there's not a tree in that development, they stripped it right out to the property lot.
Things are always named after what's gone.
And I think we need to, and we've also had situations where we've negotiated with developers to leave a twenty-foot buffer of trees, and then had our engineering department say, well, that's where the rear yard drains have to go, so you have to cut down all those trees to put the rear yard drains in. So, here again, we need to, we need to work together with the various departments, and come up with a plan where if there's a tree of certain size, and it's not within your building envelope, it has to remain.
Other thoughts about this? I remember that the very first workshop session that I did for the city of Troy, as a joint planning commission, city council meeting, and I'm thinking Mr. Stratton, at least Mr. Schultz, might have been on that at the time, was on this whole subject of infill development, and creating of an infill overlay district, to try to incentivize just the kind of things that you're talking about. Tree preservation ordinances, as the city attorney will, will tell you, are very complicated, and I remember when the, the ordinance was proposed before, and the, the public outcry. So what I'm hearing, however, is that if we're too, doing something here, we should attempt to relate it to development projects, to the extent possible, create incentives, and also look at what some of our own standards are, that may be causing. also look at what some of our own standards are that may be causing more trees to be removed than what we would like to see. Is that all pretty fair statements here, Mr. Strat?
Yeah. One of the things I could couple in with both the residential as well as the commercial that I have a personal interest in, and Phil is not here right now, but he also has an interest in, and that's stormwater management. I think that's something that we need to really encourage as much as we can, more so than what we have right now. We give them options, but it just doesn't work. You see very, very few.
These issues are highly interrelated, is what you're suggesting. Yeah. Was there anything else?
Well, no. You know, what I'm saying is we get, we get plans and say, okay, this is going to be a rain garden. And we know it, it's really just someone just putting a label on a little piece of land there and they're saying they're calling it a rain garden. It's not going to really be functional. Or they'll tie bio soils and they'll do some things that are really, not really what they're intended to be.
Okay. We have about 10 more minutes. Kind of have time to summarize at the end and give you an opportunity to identify some subjects for, for follow-up. I want to ask briefly, are there any more issues related to, related to the sign ordinance than just LED signage that we need to be thinking about and looking at? Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, we need to address the retailers currently who totally obliterate their windows from the inside with signs and we have no control over them. You can't even see into the building because every brand of beer in the world is being advertised.
Or cute graphics too, for that matter. Okay. Mr. Martin?
Just, just to talk a little bit about that, the Big Beaver district actually does require the windows to be free and clear and have what's called fenestration. Some of the earlier PUDs didn't, we kind of missed that. But it's true though, Mr. Schultz, on all the other locations, they can cover up the windows from the inside under current ordinance.
What about height of the signs? You know, especially when we're getting some of these taller buildings like that, that Stories facility over on Rochester Road. If they stick a sign up on that thing, that'd just be such a eyesore on the very top of that for miles. It would really be a
Height of all signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All signs, yeah.
That's a very good point. Of course, we know what that looks like from, you know, some of the high buildings on Big Beaver where there have been wall signs, you know, logos and such at the, at the very height of the top of the building. Okay. We're not going to get everything here tonight, but is there anything that's up here that we haven't talked about that someone has a, has a pressing need to want to bring up? Mr. Flynn?
The multifamily housing and accommodating, you know, next generation people, I think that's a really hot issue.
Yes.
Can't everybody afford it?
Yeah. And also, can also accommodate some of the same type of population or maybe not quite such a young population.
Exactly.
So, okay. Got you. Anything else? Well, what I'm seeing here is we've got a number of things that we need to look at. We have some real immediate issues regarding greater height and setbacks, regarding height and setbacks where there is height issues next to transition areas. We need to spend a little bit more time here improving our means of communication with neighboring residents. We need to take a look at our sign ordinance and look at six things, LED signage, window signs and the sign heights. Probably illumination too, I would think that's related to that too. We have some concern because of, and again, these are all somewhat interrelated with height obviously too, but infill development project with some of the residential projects, needing to try to incentivize more creative design, greater preservation of trees, look at our unengineering standards to see that we are not discouraging tree preservation by requiring excessive grading. So these are certainly some things that we need to look at and relating that to stormwater management. Is there anything that I missed back here? Look at this little guy over here. Okay, great. Well, Brian, would you like to finish up the summary?
So let me ask one question because I think it shows how efficient you can be in 55 minutes. Is there anything anyone didn't get to say that they want to say about any of these topics before I summarize, even though he just summarized? And I'll do it in 10 seconds or less. Is there anything that anyone didn't get to say? Yes.
I think we all know this and the planning commission has certainly seen it in site plans and builds. The big development in the future for housing is probably going to be from homes, single-family, old family homes that are, you know, 75 to 100 foot wide and are 1,500 foot deep. And what happens is developers come in and offer them, you know, they can make big bucks on, on selling that and moving to another residence. So we've got to incentivize or really make it a requirement that developers try to lay that out. And I, I'm, I believe that even the cluster options should be, not be an option, should be a requirement. Maybe a parallel plan.
Sort of an overlay or something like that. Okay, so residential development, you've got that out there, Dick, and can pursue that. Because this is the way I see this, this happening. They're going to go, they're going to have the, the different forums, whether it's the business community, whether it's with, with residents. And these issues are going to be sort of the headers as they move forward. So it's the identification of the issue, then they'll show some examples, I would think, and then really propose some standards or some, some resolution. I don't want to say solutions, but some resolutions to these issues and the examples as they exist and how it would lay out. And bring that back to this group, this joint group on April 22nd. Does that sound fair to everybody on a, on a good plan? So to me, it feels like it's kind of moving slowly, but two months isn't a long time to have so many forums and put some of those materials together. Looking at what other municipalities do for public participation or education or information. Right? I mean, I'm sure they'll do that with many of these issues. So that's how I would summarize, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, and think that in 55 minutes, it's pretty efficient.
I think it was. Thank you. If I could just, once, maybe staff could put this all together and get us an email of some kind, kind of a summary, it would be appreciated by everyone at the table here. And certainly I would encourage anyone that didn't think of something when we were pressed there for five minutes, and something's important to get that back to staff also. But I'm looking forward to agreeing with the forum has to say and the feedback that we're going to get from the forum. I think that's very, going to be very important to this group as we move forward. John, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I think the four issues that were of concern to the planning commission have all been raised already, so I don't, I think you did a great job.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening during public comment? We have five minutes, so it depends on how many want to speak. Yes, sir. If you could just come up and give your name and spell it for us for the record. And if you could keep, yes, if you could keep it to one minute or something and speak directly into the microphone, please.
My name is Tom Norton. I'm a resident here of Troy. I spoke before the both planning commission and city council previously with respect to the Stevenson Road Marriott Hotels issue. I'm here back again because I noted the issue with the Town Center Drive and a different result. The question is, has the council and has the commission begun to buy itself a problem with these wildly divergent decisions? Standards for review and zoning approvals are whether the standards are arbitrary and perpetuously applied and whether the decisions are promoting the public health, safety and welfare. Both the 3409 Livernoy and the 333 Stevenson met with strong resident opposition. Both opposing residential sought to prevent changes from existing office to substantially increase height allotments in multi-story buildings and denser, more intensive uses. Both cases potentially posed threats of noise, traffic, transiguency and impact of sightlines, air and light. Residential opposition succeeded in rejecting the Town Center and it failed on 333 Stevenson. It seems 333 Stevenson merited even more protection. On the map you had up a while back, we could see that there are frankly only two areas in the city of Troy where a residential neighborhood is bounded by both integrated business district, industrial business, I'm sorry, and also office mixed use. Most of the others have one or the other, not both.
Erton, could you wrap it up in the next 15 seconds?
Certainly. There's three things I'd like to leave you with. First, you're elected to serve all constituencies in the city of Troy. And a boundary line is not an excuse to pile incompatible uses next to each other. Finally, when reviewing the master plan, as you're doing so, please focus intently on those areas that I just mentioned, areas that are bounded by both integrated industrial business and office mixed use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Mr. Wilcowski, if you could give your name and how to spell it, but if you could keep your comments.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. Jim Wilcowski, 30-some-year resident. I'm a little puzzled by, we're getting into these details kind of, and I think what we need to start with is what Brian Kishnik said many months ago, what kind of a city do we want to be? And people have brought that same question up, you mayor, from time to time, what have you. I've never seen the answer. And I see these different projects, like the Amber thing the other day, the Hookah Lounge thing a while back and everything, and all the vacillation that goes on. I think we need to decide, are we interested, like say the Hookah Lounge? We interested in the health and welfare of our youth and stuff in the city? Then let's discourage that kind of stuff. The, the thing like the Amber thing, yeah, we, we want tall buildings like Mr. Schultz says and stuff, but it doesn't belong on Livernoy, I don't think. But, but I'm saying, it's the city, you need to decide what, what do you want the city to be? And then, okay, then you do the ordinance, the, the tree preservation, what have you, to fit what you want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Thanks everyone for coming this evening. It was a good meeting. It's tough to get everything done in one hour, but I think it's, we're moving forward. I think as we have meetings, we're going to whittle this thing down and get more specific. But thanks again for coming this evening. We are adjourned.